Welcome to the February 20th, 2018, meeting of the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals. We're going to start tonight's meeting with the roll call. Mr. Evans, please.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Agawas.
Here.
Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Kelsounis.
Yeah.
Mr. Lambert.
Yeah.
We have quorum. Now, for the purpose of the public that is watching the meeting here in person or through the miracle of technology at home, I'm just going to introduce everyone here up on the dais for your better understanding of who the members are and the supporting staff. So, over here to my far left, your right is Mr. Lambert. Then, to his right, is Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman of this board. This is Mr. Desmond to my right. This is Mr. Kelsounis, who's going to be voting as a full member of this board tonight. He is an alternate appointed by Troy City Council to serve when we do need extra people involved. And then, on the end here is Mr. Agawas. And then, on the side is Mr. Evans, who is a specialist with the city of Troy in the Building Department, and he also will serve as our liaison to the Troy City Administration tonight. And then, on the very end is Mr. Matzni, who is a, will serve as our legal advisor to this board tonight. He is an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy. And so, now we're going to move on to our procedures, and I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
Hello. The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by the Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then, the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. Petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the matter or on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, and come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate the relationship to the property in question, for example, next-door neighbor, lived behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. We are now going to move on to item three, which is the approval of minutes from the January 16th, 2018, meeting. They were in our packet, and I'm going to ask a member of the board if there are any questions, comments, or concerns which you'd like to make, or make an inquiry of city staff, or a possible motion for action. Mr. Lambert?
I would move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Second?
It's been moved and seconded for approval of this particular item. Is there any discussion from a member of the board? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I believe, are prepared for a vote.
Mr. Agawas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsounis.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
And we move on to item number five. It's a variance request related to 133 Melanie Lane. Mr. Evans, can you please present to us on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like to direct everyone's attention to the monitors. This property is located at 133 Melanie Lane. They're asking for several variances in order to add on to a house. The subject property is outlined in red on this aerial map. It is west of Livernoy and south of South Boulevard. There's a close-up of the neighborhood. 133 Melanie is near the western end of the street. Everything in yellow that you see here that's overlaid on this denotes property that's zoned, single-family residential, so that clearly includes the subject property and all the surrounding property in this view. And there's a close-up of the layout of the property and its current configuration when that area was taken in 2016. Now, this is the site plan the applicant has provided, and I'm going to zoom in on the portion that focuses on the existing home. The existing home is here, and this is the garage on the left. And I've outlined the addition here. And what this site plan shows is they're going to be as close as 5.72 feet to the side property line and 31.17 feet to the rear property line. Now, the ordinance requires that they be 10 feet away from the side property line and 45 feet away from the rear property line. So, in order to proceed with what they want to do, they're going to need to get these variances from the board. Now, the applicant has provided, and you have in your packet, the floor plans and some elevation drawings showing how the additional match with the house, as well as various photos of the house as it is now. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any questions for city staff? Mr. Lambert?
I'm sure Mr. Eisenbacher will allude to this letter later when he talks about public comment, but we have a letter from somebody that say they own property at 6515 Livernoy, and they're saying it adjoins this piece of property. I'm looking at the map, and I'm trying to figure out where exactly that could be on there. I don't know if you can point it out on there?
6515 Livernoy.
Must be at the end of this private street.
Yeah. I don't have the address listed, but as you can see, based on the numerical sequence and what they say in the letter that they're going to build a house, I can double-check while the board's having discussion on ownership of that.
Based upon looking at the map.
Yeah, I think so. I'll tell you what. I'll take a look while we're having discussion. If I see anything different, I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member for city staff on this item? Okay, so we're going to call the petitioner forward if he or she's present. And if you'd like to summarize your request, and please at first identify yourself and your relationship with the property in question.
My name is Alex Bogars. I'm the architect and conditioner. We have, we were asked by the Landry's to come before the board because they have been long-term residents of the city, and they would like very much to stay in the community. I don't know if you're all aware or not, but during his course of football, he sustained many injuries, and he's at a point where they're trying to make long-term plans where they can stay in the city. And by doing that, we have developed an addition format for them that would allow them to initially enjoy that room on the main level as an additional room for their family, and then to convert it to a bedroom when he can't do the stairs anymore, which they think is going to be in the very near future. The format that we have put together, as you can see on the site plan that Mr. Evans was good enough to put up on the board, I'll try to turn this around for the audience as well. This is our proposed addition area here, this entire darkened area. And then, these lines are setback lines. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
These are setback lines that are existing by the community. We have very irregular-shaped property. We looked at many different alternatives to try to find a format where we could design a bedroom on the main level for them, and we couldn't go to the west because anything we looked at here was a greater encroachment than what we have come up with in this design. As you can see, the shaded area is the area of the entire proposed addition that we're proposing, that is about half or a little bit less than half of the entire new footprint. So, we feel that this was the best location, preserves a window that's an important part of their dining and kitchen area, and will, and as you've seen in the floor plans, provides them with that opportunity on the first floor to do the addition and have an entertainment room right now, and then to convert it in the very near future to a bedroom. And then, the bedroom that they'll be using upstairs now will become a guest room for them. We feel that the hardships that are placed on the property are not our own, are not of our own. We feel that because of irregularity of property and the setbacks that are there, we have, we are forced in a position to come before the board, no matter how we would put this proposal together. So, we are simply requesting this addition based on those facts. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board members may have.
Any questions for this petitioner's representative? Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Yes. Could you please bring up that site plan that you had? Yes. There's an additional dotted line, the dark, this one.
That's the property line.
Oh, that is.
Please, sir.
Okay.
You're going to have to respond over at the microphone for the public record, so you'll just have to take a couple steps and then respond. So, do you want to repeat yourself back into the microphone?
You're looking at is, let me turn this upside down just so you can see it. That's this next parcel over here. That's parcel referred to as parcel C. It's a vacant parcel, and it has, I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Evans knows, is that even a buildable site because of the wetlands?
I haven't looked into that.
I'm not sure, but it's not their, it's not a part of our presentation this evening.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because the GIS data shows that it's part of the property, but then, when you do all the setbacks and you make the smaller envelope for where the house is possible to sit, it looks like it's impossible to have any construction.
Sir, you cannot respond. Sir, you cannot respond where you're standing.
That's exactly correct. If you were to take this property line and take the front yard setback here and rear yard setback, it's not a buildable site.
Okay.
I honestly don't know if the Landry's own it or not.
Anyone else for the petitioners? Mr. Lambert?
Just a quick question. The one letter that I referenced earlier that Mr. Eisenbacher will describe later, the one issue the property owner to the south has, is requested, it sounds like some kind of additional screening in the form of trees or shrubbery. Would the owners of the property be open to putting some more green features into that area to kind of screen off the back end of the addition?
Absolutely, yes. We'd be very interested in responding to that request for our neighbor to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
We have 31 feet, even with the proposed addition, the closest point of the proposed addition is 31 feet off the rear yard lot line where we're required 45. But, I don't know if the board received the copies of all the signatures of the
Yes.
immediate neighbors, obviously, with the exception of our neighbor to the south. We'd be very happy to provide screening for them.
Anyone else for this petitioner's representative? Okay, you can have a seat, please. Thank you. And then, at this time, we're going to ask the public for their opinion, but before I think we're going to do that, we're going to go to the communications that have been referenced several times. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, do you want to give us an overview of who communicated with us on what?
Yes. Okay, on pages 24 and 25 of our agenda is a list of the neighbors that the petitioner spoke to. Let me verify that it was the petitioner, or that were spoken to. And then, on page 25 shows a map of where those houses are located. That is 10 of the properties in favor of the variance. And then, on the table, we have a request from the property that appears to be directly to the rear of the property that's requesting the variance with concerns about the power lines and the impact on their site.
Okay, very good. So, at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing and call anyone who would like to speak one at a time to the microphone, to the podium. Please identify yourself if you'd like to address the board on this matter. Is there a member of the public who would like to address the board on this matter? Seeing that there isn't anyone who's willing to come up and share their opinion, we are going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further discussion, inquiry of staff, and/or a possible motion for action. Is there a member of the board who'd like to be recognized? Mr. Lambert?
I don't know what the majority of the board's wishes are on this matter. I mean, clearly, the piece of property is a very unusual shape, so that would give us grounds to consider that as a hardship that the owner has to deal with. As to the question about some kind of green scape, whether it's shrubs or trees, ask our city staff if we were to compose some type of a resolution that would request some additional screening, how would the staff handle that as far as making suggested trees or shrubs in there?
Yeah, and in the ordinance, there is actually a table of recommended treatment options. In this instance, it wouldn't apply because it's residential, residential. We could certainly adopt or use one of those, and it talks about the types of species, and the intent is to screen. In the ordinance, it talks about, like, to screen, say, residential from commercial. We could apply something like that. That way, it'd be clear, and we'd have in the ordinance a standard to work off of as opposed to, you know, us thinking what might work, and someone else might thinking might work. So, we could probably use that as a base.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that, as far as the planting and so forth, you're talking about on the perimeter where it's, I mean, the lot line where it's proposed to be a 31-foot setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, I think, I would say that that's a good call. Obviously, we've talked about this kind of thing many times over the past. You know, I know that there's residents, homeowners in the area that have signed off on this. This other communication, I don't think specifically addresses the short, very short, five-foot, and I think according to our paperwork, it's really under five feet. Is that correct, Mr. Evans, the side setback? It's like four-something, four and change?
The side setback, yeah, he's going to be five, so the variance would be actually less than five feet. He's going to be, I think it was five, let me look here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
5.72, something, right around there. Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
5.72.
Well, and then, my final point on that is just, and I'll call on you, is that's a real tight, you know. I mean, I wouldn't want to see that in my neighborhood that I live in. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
That does impact the house at 115 Melanie, and that is the third signature on the petition presented to us. So, it appears that their house itself is set further back on that side, so that the closeness of the houses is not going to be excessive, even though the petitioner.
Yeah, you're saying?
Just because they have the driveway on that side of the house, as you can see in the picture.
Proximity to the lot line versus proximity to the house.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other member of the board? Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
Yeah. If I may continue, the bullet on the letter we received says the existing tree line along the south, south board line of the proposed house expansion may change to our, due to our approved new house plan. So, I think they were talking also about the trees outside of the property. I'm curious if the architect knows if any of the existing vegetation will change.
Yes. If you look back at the tree survey, there are trees that are marked number 20, and those are going to be right at the corner of the construction, and we assume that those are going to be, may be impacted. I don't know until we actually get to the excavation format whether we're going to have, I have those photos of the house here.
Okay.
Do, and the, and it's basically some of these corner trees, these few here, some of them are okay, but one right here at the very end is one of the ones that's.
What about the trees that are on the, towards the property line? It looks like they're arborvitae or other evergreen. I was looking at the aerial view.
You're referring to the line along here?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to be, we'll be 31 feet away from the
Okay, so that screening will remain.
That screening is not, we're not going to touch any of that.
Property to the south.
Right. None of that will be touched. We're leaving all this alone. Because if you look, if you have, if you had an opportunity to look at the tree numbers, a sequence from one, which is right here, and it kind of sequences around the property this way, and then this comes down to tree, the last tree that, and the balance of this is all open until you get to the edge, property edge. So, we're not going to be touching anything along our south property line.
Okay. Good. So, the screening to the south remains. It's only the screening to the east.
Correct.
That is affected.
And we're going to certainly make every effort to keep those if we can.
So, Mr. Lambert, are you wanting to see a reworded proposal from the petitioner regarding said greenery on the south side? And then, with Vice Chairman Eisenbacher's concern for existing vegetation, like I heard from the petitioner was, well, we'd like to save or whatever, I don't want to put words in your mouth, like along those lines, that's different than having a specific plan. And then, the city staff, you know, reviews that over a period of time, and then there's teeth in it. So, is that something that you want to ask the petitioner to come back with? Is that something you want to attempt to work out here at the board table?
Mr. Chairman, I was kind of leaning in the direction of a resolution approving the variance with the condition that staff be directed to work with the petitioner to enhance the green screening on the south end of the property. If that would work for staff, and if it would work for a majority of the board, that would be the direction I would prefer.
Okay. So, Mr. Evans, I know in the past, we could be very specific about what the board wants, the board majority, whoever that happens to be potentially. So, you know, how can we proceed? Can you give us a couple options here if we choose to proceed?
Well, I think I've got a pretty good idea of what we're trying to accomplish. There's going to be a new structure that's about 15 feet wide, much closer. So, I would think that other, as long as there's no impacts, my concern would be is there's impacts on that 12-foot-wide utility, putting plants in there. So, I think that's something that everybody here needs to be aware of tonight, is that we can apply one of the three standards in our zoning ordinance, whatever we, both parties agree that will provide the screening immediately, but also as it grows up, but that it might not be able to be put in the easement. So, it'd have to be 12 feet north of the south property line. But, we have three screening options. I can show them to you in the zoning ordinance really quick, if you'd like to see.
Sure. I think we can afford the time since we only have one major item on our agenda tonight.
All righty. Okay, so on the screen, I put just some, I'm going to show you three alternatives. So, this first one, and I apologize, I'm having trouble reading that from here, but as you can see, the separation is a taller screen of, what does that say there? I can't read it from here, I'm sorry.
Evergreen tree.
Does that say evergreen trees? Okay. So, that's alternative one that's in the ordinance.
Three foot.
Yeah, now the other, yeah, that's one. There's two.
Ten foot.
As you can see, they're a little taller on planting. Then, three gives us a staggered look. And then, we have a list of, there's a plant list later in the ordinance that tells us what's good for what situation, things not to plant.
Okay. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
I was just looking at the five criteria that we have in looks of getting a resolution on the table. Just going through them real quick. First one, A, exceptional characteristics of the property is the irregular shape, as was clearly demonstrated in the site plan. B, characteristics which make compliance difficult is related to this property. C, they are not of a personal nature. Their characteristics are for this property. Characteristics, D, the characteristics which make compliance with the dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or the previous owner. It was, it was created by the shape of the property, shape of the land. E, proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property will be located, will not impact the adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or endanger the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. I believe that with the commitment to provide screening to adjacent properties, and the fact that the architect has laid out the property addition to have the smallest impact possible, given his buildable envelope, that all five criteria are met, and I would like to move the variance for approval with the stipulation that additional screening be added along the lines of the 10-foot spacing, the middle picture on the zoning ordinance.
Alternative two.
Second? Moved by Eisenbacher, seconded by Desmond, is that correct? And we'll go to discussion. I'm going to ask the petitioner to take a seat. At this point in time, it's back to the board, and the general public can't participate at this point. Any discussion on this motion? I would just inquire of the author of the motion. Since the petitioner's representative talked about potentially losing one tree, would you be amenable and possibly more? I imagine there's certain things you can't plan for until you get into the job. Would you be amenable to accepting a friendly amendment essentially to require any trees that are removed because of the addition, that same number would be replanted somewhere else on the property that doesn't include the back property line for the south area, meaning just find a better place for it, and it may not be able to be moved, but that essentially means that there's a loss of three trees. They're going to find three plus that south area. I'm just, I'm still very concerned about how close in proximity that addition is to the side property line. That's where I'm getting at.
I am. If you look on page 10 of our agenda, and the line of evergreens that already are there, they appear to be of the type that is shown on the screen behind us, the 10-foot spacing with a thick line of cedars. If that line of cedars is replaced following construction, per the design, I believe that your intent of what you're saying is covered, which would be covered by the resolution, I believe.
So, you think it's already in there?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Evans, would that be your understanding?
Well, yeah, they're going to, I mean, essentially Well, yeah, they're gonna, I mean, essentially, it appears they're going to either maintain or replace, or add quite a number of trees.
Okay. Anyone else for Mr. Keltzounas?
What about the part that you mentioned here about approaching the area that the, the power lines go through?
Mr. Evans, do you want to address that?
Is that underground or area?
Yeah, if, well, we'd have to take a look to see, but either way, when you do have an easement, especially if there's utilities through there, the utility company, if they need to come in there and service it and remove those trees, they're not obligated to put them back. So it may be better to have, at least explore putting the vegetation at the north end of that easement rather than in the easement itself.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, do you want to incorporate that into your?
I mean, easements override everything because they're already established and they have rights. I believe that was in the layout of the subdivision, and then the adjacent property appears to have lots of space because they had an existing house that was knocked down.
I would say based on the motion, if it does pass, staff has a comfortable level working with what's best alternative, because ultimately, the long-term goal here is to establish screening vegetation. So if it's better in the long run to have those outside the easement, I would recommend that's what we do. And staff's comfortable with being flexible either way. But I, we understand that the motion calls for alternative two along the back, and of course, because the construction really doesn't go towards the, is right along the south property line, it's very possible that those existing cedars are gonna stay anyways.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to be heard? Okay, I believe, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes, to approve, correct?
To approve, yes, to grant.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounas?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Gauas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, you have your variance. We move on to item number six, and that is related to communications that we may have before us from staff.
I do not have any communications.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, miscellaneous business, this is any business that the board would like to dispose of or bring up. Mr. Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, on behalf of Mr. Desmond, he may want to add on to what I'm going to say. I wasn't prepared to say anything particular tonight, but I wanted to thank city staff for allowing himself and myself to attend the training that Oakland County put on for zoning board of appeals members out at the county complex a couple weeks ago. Learned a lot at that session. Hopefully, the county will put one of those on again, but learned a lot at it. And once again, appreciate the city encouraging us to attend and underwriting the cost of us attending. It wasn't a big amount, but it's still every dollar counts. So appreciate that very much. And also, I think Mr. Evans and two other members of city staff attended that session as well.
Right, right. We had the building official was there, and I can't recall who else was there.
Glenn?
Oh, our economic development specialist, Glenn Lapin, was there. And that was actually underwritten a little bit too by the Michigan Association of Planning. And they'll do that periodically throughout the state. So if any board members here are interested in future training, even though they might not be at the county, the city can get a very favorable rate. You may have to travel a little bit, because they might not have it right at the county, but either way, they do that periodically throughout the year. So let me know if anyone would be interested in additional training. It was very informative. It was worth doing. I'm glad I got the chance. I appreciate it, so.
I think Vice Chairman Eisenbacher is interested in attending a next session on Mackinac Island when available. Is that true? No, it's not true.
Sort of correct.
Wouldn't mean that, though.
Yes, Ms. Koopa?
I just want to apologize for being late, but we had a joint Troy City Council and Planning Commission meeting to discuss, basically, to review what the Planning Commission and, and the master plan and how we work together as the two bodies, because we've found over the last six months or so that we haven't always ended up approving things in council, in commission, that, that council saw exactly the same way. And just to dig deeper into some of the concepts of zoning and planning. And I think that, I would echo what Mr. Lambert said, some of these trainings are pretty amazing. I took my citizen planner course in September and passed the exam, and I will be doing my capstone presentation in early March, hopefully, when we don't have a heavy planning commission meeting. And I would be happy for all of you to take a look or join when I do that capstone presentation. That's the final step in my becoming a certified citizen planner. And I would also love to go to the ZBA courses, because of the seven units that I took over two and a half days, the most difficult modules were the zoning modules. And, and so any opportunity that we all have, I recommend that we take. And then I also want to offer one comment. I remember about a year ago, I think, the city attorney came to us and said, if we are giving too many ordinances, then maybe we need to examine the, the variances, that maybe we need to look at the ordinances. Mr. Motzni, do you remember the, the presentation that they gave about the number of, like, I just feel like...
Yeah, that's true. Actually, it's in the Zoning Enabling Act, it indicates that if there's too many variances being granted, it's, the zoning board should report to the, to the planning commission that maybe you ought to take a look at this. So that's correct.
Can we get an idea of how many for the, say, last year, how many came before us and how many we approved at the next meeting? So that way, we can decide and maybe discuss that as a body?
I think Mr. Evans could probably provide that information.
Yeah, I saw it. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Great, so we, is there another member who has any business? Okay, see none. We will move on to public comment. So if there's a member of the public who would like to address the board on any matter, please come forward to the podium and be recognized. If there's a member of the public who would like to address the board on any matter, please come forward and be recognized at the podium here. Seeing that there isn't, we'll close that portion out, and we will be adjourned until our March meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a very good night.